Lily, are you recording? Okay, alright. Alright, first of all, thanks everyone for joining, especially our candidates. My name is Shirley, I'll be moderating the event on behalf of ACA, Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance. We have done two similar forums in the past. It was in person. Of course, this year we have to do everything virtual. So first of all, I want to, you know, thank everyone for coming and I will introduce the format. We will give everyone, every candidate, five minutes, up to five minutes for self-introduction. The initial order is based on last name. And then in the Q and A sections, we will ask our participant to put in the chat window for your questions. And we will pick them out during the Q and A section. And then we will most likely leave the last 20 minutes to take live questions. People can use the raise hand function on Zoom and we will pick people to ask the live questions at the time. Any, any general questions, especially a candidate, do you have any questions on the format? Go ahead.
The slide we prepared, how is that visible to the participants?
I will, yeah, I will show the slides and as the candidates are speaking. So let's get to that.
So will the candidates see them or how?
Everyone will see them.
Okay.
Yes, so I will share the screen. Okay, any, any other things, any co-hosts want to add before we get to the meat of the meeting? Okay, let me share these slides. A brief intro of our organization. Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance, we're a local nonprofit that encourage Asian Americans to actively participate and lead in civic engagement and help out and help build a diverse and inclusive community. That's our mission. Alright, let's go to the candidates. Slide show. Okay. Alright Benjamin, you up first?
Great, well, thank you everyone for the warm welcome. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Benjamin Blumenthal and I've lived here in Acton now for 11 years with my wife Doreneet, our son Aaron, who is a student at Conan Ten Elementary School, and our dog Duke, who you may hear barking in the background, just to forewarn everybody. I'm running for school committee because I believe now is the time to act on change in our community. And because we are also on the precipice of change. Having worked for nearly 20 years in the public sector, first for the office of the state auditor, Joe Dinucci, and then subsequently for the MBTA for nine years, along with the past two years in healthcare within the research finance field. I believe that I'm one of the strongest candidates for one of these two seats on the school committee. I've worked also as a religious school teacher and am currently tutoring my own son at home for his religious school and also in preparation for his bar mitzvah. Should I be elected, I will be working on addressing the issues of racism, bigotry, and xenophobia, which has seen a meteoric rise within our community within the last few years. I'll also be working with our educators to ensure that we, that when we return back to a five-day school, a five-day-a-week school session beginning on April 5th, that we work together in conjunction with our educators to make sure that they have the necessary tools in place to ensure a safe return to our schools. And lastly, I will be actively involved within budgetary issues, ensuring that our Gates slash Douglas School is on time and on budget. Therefore, I am humbly asking you, the voters, to vote for me on March 30th. Thank you.
Thanks Benjamin. Let me move on to Cara.
I'm up, huh?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. My name is Cara Osselman. I have lived in the school district since 2003, starting in Boxborough and moving to Acton in 2017. I have a freshman in college and two children still in high school. You can see my educational background from the slide. Equally important to this position is my experience as a parent in this district. The school committee has two main points of focus, policy and budget. It is my experience of being a parent in this community, which is invaluable and which will drive my contribution. And that is why I'm asking for your vote for school committee. Thank you.
Thanks Cara. Andrew?
Thank you, thanks, thanks for inviting me to this forum with these great candidates. It's, it's an honor to be with you. My name is Andrew Schwartz and I'm running for a seat on the Acton Boxborough School Committee. As a proud parent of four boys in the district, I believe that we are at this incredible inflection point for learning and progress in education. I'd like your vote because I want to help our district continue to be a place where our kids can thrive. We've lived in Acton for three years and having lived previously in Waltham and in Cincinnati, Ohio. And this is an amazing area. We have neighbors who were born here, who were born in other countries, who span dozens of cultures and religions, who've all come together to make Acton a greater example of this country at its best. Our 13-year-old is in seventh grade at RJ Gray, my 10-year-old and eight-year-old are Douglas, attending the remote learning program. And our five-year-old has spent the last year in Monty preschool. My wife Julie and I have both found the opportunity to be involved in our town. She is involved in the Douglas PTO and on the board of the Acton Boxborough Youth Baseball. I'm on the school councils of both Douglas and RJ Gray. And I may also be Doug the Eagle, the Douglas mascot. I've coached Little League as well. My background is in strategic consulting however. And really, it's about finding solutions to nagging problems. I've owned my own businesses, I've established, I've run innovation labs for Fortune 5 companies. I've been a midwife for startups. I've worked in the agency world, I've consulted in the worlds of healthcare, financial services, entertainment, non-governmental organizations, a whole slew of categories. And it all comes down to me loving to solve problems. And I think that experience has given me the perspective for how to help communities like ours. We've had the privilege of sitting on the board of Ohio Valley Voices, a world-class day school, a preschool in Lexington, Massachusetts. I want to run for student, or for student council, for school committee because I believe that parents and administrators, teachers and staff are partners in creating a great learning environment. Our job is to give kids the tools they need to be the best people they can be. Schools are at the center of our community, they connect us, they make us stronger, they build our future. When our schools work, they give our kids a love of learning, the tools to explore their curiosities and an environment where they can grow in incredible ways. And I think the school committee can help create the foundation for those results. I think it's more than just budget reviews and policy exploration. It's about setting the tone for how we together create a district where every student's able to become their best selves. So I would like to be your vote for stu-, for school committee. May the Schwartz be with you.
Thanks Andrew. Danny?
Hi everyone, my name is Danny Fenston. And I would like to tell you who I am and why I'm running for a seat on the school committee. I originally came from China. And 20 years ago, when I was making the hardest decision in my life about whether or not I should come to USA in Beijing. And Acton was a quiet suburban town. The world changes faster than we can recognize. Now Acton is a town with 26.8% of foreign-born residents. I am one of them. And I'm proud of my bilingual and multicultural background. Because my background always forced me to be open-minded and open-hearted to people who are similar with me and the people who are different than me. And I have been living in Acton for eight years. I have three kids, they're all at school here and they're all called Acton home. I am a trained educator. When I was in my previous life in Beijing, I was editor, working for the State From Education Material Publisher. Millions, I'd say millions of students and teachers use the textbooks and the teacher books, workbooks. Yeah, from, yeah, from our company, from the publisher. I have, I had traveled more than 25 provinces to read the candidates and also worked with experts, not scholars, and the curriculum specialist and educators, teachers, administrators to, yeah. We cooperated with them to give up for the best educate the curriculum we could. And that's a rich experience that made me, that gave me a deep understanding of the system of education in China. And when I never stopped learning, when I came to USA, I say, I, I was a castle and for some Chinese schools, schools in Illinois and in Houston. And I also got my, I recently got my second master degree in teaching Chinese at the college from Brandeis. And I'm licensed, the public schools, word language teacher, I'm an educator. And I'm also licensed interpreter. I, yeah, provide interpreter, interpreter language service for the LEP, Latin English proficiency clients at hospitals, at community and at court. And talking about sharing those experiences with you and I, yeah. I think when I, yeah, it's because when I look back, when I reflect on my experience and the road I had, yeah, the road I had taken from where I was to where I am now. And I realized it is such, yeah, it is such a rich life. And it has, it takes tremendous perseverance, hardworking, resilience, open-mindedness to, yeah, it should for me and my whole family to be here. And those are characters and traits I want my kids have. And I also want our school committee, our school district can develop them, can instill them, yes, deal those characters in them. The reason why I'm learning is, I think, yeah, all those skills has built me a better communicator, communicator, advocate, I realize how important it is, yeah, communication is and multicultural it is to bring the society together. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Danny, thanks everyone for their introduction. We are going to the Q and A. I am going to start with a few questions. We, in the Q and A section, we will rotate the the speaking sequence of the candidates. So the first questions will start with Ben and then the second question will start with Cara. Okay, so first question. Everyone belongs to many different communities and or groups defined by shared geography, religion, ethnicity, income, cuisine, interest, race, ideology, or intellectual heritage. As a school committee member, which group are you able to most effectively represent? Start with Benjamin, thanks.
So thank you for the question. In terms of the different communities that I belong to, I belong to the Jewish community, I belong to the Acton Democrats, I belong to a group of transit workers. But most of all, the community that I belong to and that I will reflect, should I be elected as school committee member, is the community of Acton regardless of our background, regardless of our differences, and regardless of our shared past experiences. I am here, should I, like I said, be fortunate enough to be elected, am here to represent everybody in town and to ensure that their voices are heard through me as an elected official.
Thanks Ben, Cara.
Can you repeat the question please?
Everyone belongs to many different communities and or groups defined by shared geography, religion, ethnicity, income, cuisine, interest, race, ideology, or intellectual heritage. As the school committee member, which group are you able to most effectively represent?
That's an interesting question. Um, I don't feel an affinity to any particular group. As an American, I think we're a melting pot. I have a German-American parents, my, I'm first generation, my parents came here after World War II. And they certainly had affinity groups. And we just became Americans. And so even based on the food that we like or our religion or, um, you know, I think it's more the affinity group that you belong to is your place of residence, right? You, you know, that's how America kind of builds itself, that we, we end up being like, actually economically, that's how we all melt together because we live in these communities and are one point of inflection is, you know, economics really. So I think that I represent, as a school committee member, I represent children and I represent the parents in this community. You know, we have a community identity, Acton has a community identity, Massachusetts has a community identity. That is, I feel, my identity. And so raising our children in this community is our common MO, our common modus operandi, and that's what we're doing. And that's what we're trying to all do to the best of our abilities. And so I think that I'm able to represent that, that every parent has the best wishes and the best intentions in mind for their children. And that we're all trying to do the best that we can for our children, for everybody's children and for our community. And that's what I feel my affinity is. I don't feel any particular affinity to any other groups, so thank you.
Thanks Cara. Andrew?
Thanks for asking. You know, Acton is this incredible community of many cultures and nationalities and religions and races. But the thing we all have in common is that we are all Acton. And as the school committee member, my job is not necessarily to think about me. To think about us. We are all from different places. We are all of different points of view. But we all come together around one self-selected community. We moved here because we think there's something special here. There's something about this place that makes sense to us. We all have to be able to speak about what matters to us. And those of us that will have the privilege of representing the rest of the community have to keep our ears open. I will listen to everyone. I don't think it, what you are is less interesting than who you are. And I think that it's important to keep that in mind. We are together as Acton, you know, in the school world, we are parents or we are educators or we are people who are concerned about the growth of the community through the education process. And I think that for me, my most important affinity, to use Cara's word, would be to our community, what we can make together. And to be respectful of everyone that's a part of it. Growing up, I was Jewish and I grew up in a, a community that was not predominantly Jewish. Being a part of the non-dominant culture means that you always have a little bit on the outside. Here in Acton, we have such a plurality of different cultures that are here that I think it's important to remind, remind ourselves that everyone needs their voice heard. And those of us that may have the privilege of being able to represent you have to keep our ears open.
Thanks Andrew. Danny?
Um, I want to talk about myself in the final first. I am, I am an educator, I'm a teacher. I'm going to teach at a public school very soon, starting from next week. And so I think I belong to the associate of education, educator in Massachusetts. And I'm a parenting, and I'm a resident in Acton. Those are three in one. Three of the, yeah, three in one, those identities I have in one. And my family, I, 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 I'm openly to say I converted myself to Christian. And but my kids, my two daughters are in Sutaiism, who was Buddhism. So I, I don't, I, if you ask me what group, and also I'm a, yeah, foreign-born resident, resident in Acton. There are many international families who don't have, who are not, yeah, citizens yet. They don't have, they're not registered votes. But I would like to bring their voices to school committee if I had, yeah, if I have the privilege to serve it.
Thanks Danny. Now goes on to our second question. Can you share a lesson you have learned from your own children that's most relevant to your preparation to become a school committee member? I'll start with Cara.
Thank you. Okay, so the question is, a lesson that I have learned from my children that is most relevant to me becoming a school committee member, is that correct?
Yes.
I can't think of a lesson from my children that is not relevant. I come from like a German background. My parents were very into education and becoming a mom was the biggest education I've ever experienced in my life. So there's no lesson they have not taught me. You will be schooled by your children. They are still teaching me every day. The most important lesson that I have learned from my children to be a school committee member is that you have to leave your ego at the door, okay? Your children are completely different people than you are. And while you may influence, you try to influence their values and you try to show them and model for them. But they have their own ideas and their own opinions. So what my children have taught me is to let go of any preconceptions that I have for them and that they will do fine on their own. They have their own ideas. And just like they're my children, and so I feel that they're a part of me, yet they are so separate from me as individuals. And I feel the community at large is, is that we all come from such different backgrounds and different environments. And that is all such good information for us to take in, in every decision that we make and how we live our lives. Thank you.
Thanks Cara. Andrew?
Thanks for asking. I think the best way to talk about a lesson learned is to look about the last 18 months or so. From, actually, the last year, from, from when we thought things were our world to the way that they are now. Watching how the schools have been the center of our children's lives and seeing the difference between what it's like when they're not able to attend to what it's like. And they are about, to see, the pandemic has shown us just how important that our schools are in supporting our kids. It's a social place, it's a learning place, it's a place where they grow their character. And I think what I've learned is that our job as parents is to make the, the system work for our kids. As school committee member, I would take from that, that the job of the school committee and the educators is to create the system that works for parents and for students. We've got some incredible challenges going into this next year because of everything we've been challenged with over, with over the last. And I think the lesson that I've learned is how important it is to be able to have a strong school structure in the center of our kids' lives, in the center of our community.
Thanks Andrew. Danny?
Um, I really like this question. I have three kids and they are all different, they have different distress and different circumstances. And my son, yeah, is the oldest one, he is identified by school as gifted, gifted child with a high IQ. And my husband and I, of course, have a high expectation for him to success. However, he's not interested in the school, schooling or learning traditionally, conventional learning. And later, yeah, we allowed him to go to many to my vocational school. This experience, I would say, yeah, there are a lot of frustration in a long way, but it really teach me to be open-minded, to define success, especially student success. And though I say to, to accept the way our kids, the way, yeah, the way our kids are and support them the best way we can. I think that's a lesson I have learned. And I really want to contribute to this, yeah, turn this lesson into, I just say into, 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 I would say, positive, yeah, perception and bring it to the school committee to better serve the families.
Thanks Danny. Benjamin?
Thank you Shirley. One lesson I'd like to speak about is actually a moment in time, which happened, I want to say, a year ago, two years ago at this point. It's hard to tell with the impact that COVID has had in our communities. But it was during one of the meetings that I had with Aaron's cohort of staff, because he has an IEP. And for me, as a student who also had an IP going through public schools, it was really a moment that came in, came in full circle for me. Because at one aspect, I was seeing as a parent, who I placed my trust in the educators to ensure that my son has the best access to, you know, the educational system that we have here. But also as a former student, I got to see firsthand really how the IP program and in particular addressing students' needs on an individual basis has really changed over the course of time. So therefore, for me, the most important lesson I could glean from that is really that we are to be partners with our educators. And it is in them who we trust to ensure that our students come out as prepared as possible to combat the challenges in the future. So again, should I be fortunate enough to be elected? I will ensure that I work with our educators to make sure that they have a voice within our community to ensure that our children are as best prepared as possible. And it really was a heartwarming moment, I should say, in terms of that one moment in time from a year, year and a half ago. Thank you.
Thanks Ben. Another prepared question, then I'll go to the questions posted in the chat. During the League of Women's Voters Candidate Forum, you were asked to comment on the recent racist attack on sitting school committee members. What should the role, what should the role of the AB school committee be on the recent surge of attacks against Asian Americans across the country? We'll start with Andrew.
Thanks, this is something that means a lot to me. I think that the racist attacks everywhere have been abhorrent. I think they've been growing over the last five, six years. I think that what we're seeing, not just in the Asian American community, but it's been spiking there. Guys, people have as an opportunity to be a centerpiece of the community is to be able to stand up, not only to show that this is not the way we are, this is not who we are, this is not what we allow, but also to place within the schools the kind of conversation necessary to show the kids, to show the students, to show the, the, the community, that this is something to be dissuaded, something to be argued, something to be fought against. It's terrible that people would zoom bomb into these things to be able to start saying things. It's terrible to see how it's so easy for racism to slip out around the world. To fight against that every day is something we have to have at the core of who we are. It is the worst wrong. I mentioned earlier that what you are is not as important as who you are. Going after somebody because of, you know, the heritage they have is not at all what we. Going after somebody because of the heritage they have is not at all what we and that it's important for the school committee, as a government organization, as a community representation, to be able to stand up and fight against it every chance we have.
Thanks Andrew. Danny?
Uh, yes. In my campaign, I emphasize the oval and oval. Uh, yeah, I, I emphasize this idea over and over, which is culture, cultural integration. As long as we know each other better, we break down the stereotype we keep, a keep about Asian, about African American, about Mexico, Latino Americans. I think we, as, as we know each other deep and we respect each other, I think we can combat racism at the root. So I'm not choosing side, like I don't want to play a fighter. In this issue, I take my stand and I advocate better understanding, better communication, better integration, especially cultural integration, integration. I advocate with as a school, we break, we celebrate cultures, we celebrate languages, we celebrate our legacies. And we bring communication deeper, know each other, have more activities to celebrate cultures, have culture clubs, clubs. And as we know each other better, we can sit side by side, walk side by side, we can trust each other. I think this is the way to deal with racism, any negative, yeah, racism and, I said division. Thank you.
Thanks Danny. Benjamin?
Thank you. Being somebody who has faced antisemitism in my own lifetime, I'm concerned about the increase of hate bigotry and xenophobia we've seen in our community. In particular, the anti-Asian attacks throughout the, the country give me great concern because I can relate myself to being called some rather nasty things, which I won't reiterate on here. And it puts me at great concern that other individuals within our community are being attacked because of who they are. In particular, um, I feel that our community has a lot of work to do to address bigotry, racism and xenophobia. And in order to make our community truly a welcoming place, I will work to make sure that we address these issues on a holistic manner. And hopefully will result in a decrease in hate in our community. I'll work also to bring in programming that helps educate our students about the differences that we each have. And more importantly, try to help us lift, as one of my mentors used to say, as we climb together. So in closing, I hope that should I be fortunate to be on school committee, I'll see to it that we bring in programming that's diverse and that addresses our differences and helps educate our students as to who we are as a community as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks Ben. Cara?
Shirley, as number four, could you repeat that question for me?
During the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, you were asked to comment on the recent racist attacks on sitting school committee members. What should the role of the AB School Committee be on the recent surge of attacks against Asian Americans across the country?
As I mentioned in my opening statement, the role of school committee is both policy and budget. And this is, this is an area where policy can really influence the interpretation of who and, and what we see ourselves as a community. Act in Boxborough, the dominant culture, to quote Andrew, which I think is a good way of looking at it. We all feel that the dominant culture might be a certain culture, but the, the culture is what we all are. It's twenty six point five percent Asian, as Danny mentioned. And then among the rest of the population, we all come from such different places. And so, um, judging for somebody from, for their heritage, as if that's a negative point. Really, the richness that we bring and create in this community is the, is the positiveness of the heritage that we all bring to this community. So the people who somehow feel like they are in the dominant culture and that their heritage is somehow means more than anybody else's, that is, uh, that's an issue for policy. And that is where the school community and the school committee can come together and define ourselves as who we are as community. And so I think that, um, yeah, you know, thank you. Um, that's a question we need to have that every single person needs to ask themselves. That's a question that is very much, you know, contemporary that people are asking themselves. And that the school committee is a place where that comes to the table. And that we talk about that and we make those definitions about who we are as community. Thank you.
Thanks Cara. Okay, next question. Um, school committee members can be criticized no matter what decisions are made. How would you handle this criticism? We'll start with Danny.
Always be objective. And it is a privilege to serve the public. And I, if I have the privilege to take this job, first, I would give, I would give thanks to everyone. And I would value everyone who have supported them, who, who support me, everyone's opinions and the input. And I will listen to everybody's voices regardless of whether they support me or don't support me. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks Danny. Ben?
Having served on multiple committees, working for both the state agencies and quasi-state agencies. I've gone up before the public and I have faced criticisms when it has come to cuts to service at the MBTA, to budgetary issues and so on and so forth. The thing that I've learned the most in terms of how to handle criticism is that when our constituents come and speak to us, they, they speak out of an urgency of concern. And it's our job as either elected or appointed officials to ensure that those folks at least leave with some semblance of satisfaction essentially in terms of a response that we have to give to our constituents. At the end of the day, I think the best way to diffuse any sort of criticism is to step aside and if there's one or two or several people, have a coffee with them. Sit down, explain your position, try to find some commonality. At the end of the day, we're here to work together as citizens of our community, as constituents and as elected and appointed officials.
Thanks Ben. Cara?
Well, having three children, I'm quite accustomed to criticism. So I think I know how to deal with it quite well. Thank you. Um, I don't take it personally. You know, if somebody has something critical to say, then I'm there to listen. You know, I have a background in philosophy. I've always examined every single side of every argument, no matter how outlandish in some cases. But I don't, I don't come to the table as that, that, that somebody's criticism is outlandish. And again, you can't take it personally. You know, everybody has a different point of view. And we have a lot of opinions in this community. And I have found a lot of value to listening to people who don't think like I do and who have a critical role to play. I mean, we all have an opinion and we all need to voice that and we all need to put that together and figure out where the points of commonality are, what we can do about things. And in, you know, in this, in this particular instance, what is the role of the school committee and what is not? What can we do as school committee members and what, what, what can we affect? So in general, as far as criticism is concerned, you know, we are, we are teaching our children to become critical thinkers. I mean, that is the whole point. And especially now with the internet and disinformation and all sorts of information sources. One thing I love about the Act in Boxborough School Community is it seems like my children, what I see is that they are very capable of parsing information and where it comes from. And so somebody's going to be critical of me. I mean, that's life, right? So you know, you, you take it on and as long as it's legitimate, I love it and you move on. Thank you.
Thanks Cara. Andrew?
Like Cara, I've got four boys and I can't walk down the stairs without being criticized. But you know, there's a difference between personal criticism and professional or political criticism. Personal criticism, that's you making fun of my hair or my beard. Go ahead. I make fun of it all the time. But professional political criticism is based on the policies that you adhere to or the policies you represent. That kind of criticism comes in two ways as well. There's constructive and there's abusive. Abusive criticism is not valuable in as much as it doesn't accomplish anything. As a person is a representative for that, you don't let it hurt you. It's not going after you. You're not making fun of my kids. You're not making fun of the things that are, are me. You're making fun of the role that I have. And the role that I have is one to move the community forward. To move things forward, you need some activation energy. And sometimes the spark you need is somebody standing up at a community meeting yelling. Or maybe it's somebody going to the, a, a website to send out pre-written letters to the school committee to make it so that it seems like there's a greater push there. All of that means that there's a group of people who need to get something done, who need to be heard. And that's valuable and that or move. I addition in the pie and you're taking anything anybody says about you personally, you shouldn't be in that position. These people aren't coming after you. We're not a partisan town. We're a town that's all based around trying to make everything better for our friends, our family, our neighbors and people we don't know, but see driving down the road. So criticism is a part of the game and it's what you sign up for when you do this, but it can be helpful to move things forward.
Thanks Andrew. Next question. What are some of the big challenges that AB School will face post-pandemic? And how will you help to address them? We'll start with Ben.
So I think one of the areas that we're going to have a hard time post-pandemic is, you know, getting caught up with our students. I know that many students, especially in communities of color and elsewhere throughout the state have fallen so far behind because they do not have access to the necessary tools needed to access the internet or to get onto their online zooms, which has created this domino effect where I just recently read, I think it was in the New York Times, that some students are, are as far back as a year in terms of their education. So I think one of the areas that we're going to need to address moving forward is how to ramp up our students' education and bring them back to where they were. Uh, or bring them to a point where they should be at this current time as a result of that loss of education and learning. I'm already seeing it firsthand with my son in a religious school setting because he has fallen behind in a year in terms of trying to, to ascertain the material needed to prepare for his bar mitzvah when he turns thirteen. So we're working, I'm working with him one-on-one to bring him up to speed because unfortunately, the time lost has resulted in that degradation of skills, so to speak. I think the other issue that we're going to run into post-pandemic is ensuring that all students have access to computers and online access to ensure that the research that they do at home is easily accessible. And I feel that there's a great techn, uh, technological divide between the most wealthiest of students and the poorest. And I think that we need to bridge that divide moving forward.
Thanks Ben. Cara?
Hi, um, well, I think that this is the thing I worry about the most right now, honestly. Um, the question is about the big challenges post-pandemic that AB will face. And I think that there's a lot of children who have felt left behind academically. Ben, you just mentioned your child in the religious setting. But I think that many children feel like they haven't gotten the skills that they need mathematically or, you know, in math or sciences or, or whatever that might be. But most importantly, the, um, the, the, um, the subjects that are building blocks for the next, right? So for the next years. So if they don't feel, if they feel this week has, this year has been weak mathematically, they're never going to have the confidence to move on mathematically. And I think we really need to address that. We cannot allow this to happen to an entire generation of children. So, you know, I think that's especially important in the high school that we, we, you know, address the, the fact that these children may not feel confident in the skills, in the building blocks that they need to move forward. So, but that's in the high school. I'm grateful that I don't have school age children. I think these parents must be really in the thick of things. I mean, they must be so, um, divided and wondering, you know, what, what they're, you know, what, what skills did their children miss and are they going to be left behind? So that's academically, we have a social element to this, the, the, the social aspect that these children have been missing out on. And then, you know, the high school kids, their mental health, what has this done to them being inside for a year? And how is that going, going to affect them moving on? And we have all these, you know, challenges, the, the racism, the, um, mental health, the drive to achieve this, this desire to get into good colleges. And we need to address this. We need to not say, okay, it's business as usual. We need to say, we're getting back after a pandemic after a year. And we need to figure out what is best for these children and, and move on.
Thanks Cara. Andrew?
This is the key, isn't it? Yes, last year has been incredible. And I, I think a lot about what you learn from PTSD and trauma training. There is before, during and after. The world we were in before is not coming back. It's different now. The during that we're in and we're hopefully getting near the end of, but the during that we're in is what we're having to deal with. The after, we can't quite understand, but we can't get past where we are now until we grapple with what we're doing now. Act of Boxborough, we're a great district, a community that, that values education comprised of people who care about the growth of our kids. And I think the charter of the school committee needs to focus on learning what this new world means, to find adjustments that best position our kids for success and, and create these greater ties to the overall community. We need to look closely at what worked and what at, we need to refine, refine our curriculum, our calendar, how we communicate with families, what technology needs for us. This is a generation that's lost a year, but it's not just a generation. This is a world population that has lost a year. Everyone is behind because of this, but only behind based on what we thought we were going to be two years ago. The world we're in now needs to be put back together in ways that has the gold firmament between the broken pieces of clay to make the, the vase stronger. This world we're in needs to be informed by what we've learned over this last year. The kids have suffered emotionally, they have suffered academically. If you look at just whether they were going to get the same scores at the end of this year that we had thought they would, beginning of last year. But they are for the most part safe. They are for the most part of going through something that happens once every hundred years. So it's our opportunity to look at this with new eyes and try to come up with a better way to solve the problems we had before.
Thanks Andrew. Danny?
I resonate with what Andrew just said. And I like the way he described this as a PTSD before, during and after. I have to say, this COVID, this pandemic has brought a great impact to family, to family, to, to, to our students, especially our young students, because they have experienced isolation in the past year. Even though some of the families, some are very fortunate, they have parents work from home, but some are not. And I, as an educator, and I, I feel, yeah, I can feel that stress we're going to deal with next year. Students are left behind. Students are traumatized. I, no matter how optimistic we want to be, it is a pandemic that has isolated our students, cut them off from. that has isolated our students, cut them off from the society they are used to be connected with. And they are lacking, yeah, virtue, virtues, that, like I said, virtue schooling is less effective as in person. And there are a lot of things and missing from this style of learning. And also, they couldn't participate, they couldn't play sports, they couldn't go volunteer. There are a lot of things they couldn't do and couldn't develop as, I would say, as a, as a child, as a, as a child. And now, I say, we, school, district, the school, district, and community would want to provide them, but we didn't, we could not do it. There are a lot to catch up with.
Thanks, Danny. Next question. A school committee member represents us. How will you know about our opinions on issue before a committee meeting? Is there a particular issue that you think in our school that needs to improve? I think so, I'm going to rephrase it a little bit. I think it's, how will you, like, hear the opinions from the community and like, what do you feel like is the most efficient way to gather information or for the community to share their opinions before a committee meeting? And whether there is a particular issue that you think the the school that should improve on? We'll start with Cara.
Hi, well, the school committee has been in place for quite a while. So I would like to ask Juan, who I know has been on the school committee for quite a while. Is there a formal mechanism for people to address their concerns? Because that's how things should come to school committee. They should come in a way that everyone is aware of them. Can you answer that?
Thank you, Cara. And I think this is a full of yours time. I would rather not to take up your time. Whatever is answer you gave, I think it will be be good answers. Thank you.
Okay, well, then I think that any formal mechanism for addressing any community members question is, is a good way to go about things. I would like to hear from any member of the community and I would like to hear from them either in talking to me or in email. However, there are open meeting laws. So there are, you know, legally ways that things need to be communicated. So aside from that, I would like to hear from any member of the community at any time. And it, you know, that used to be much more available to me because I've been on the, on the soccer sidelines since 2003 essentially. And you hear from a lot of people when your children are involved in sports. You hear a lot from people when you, as a, as a parent, are involved in different, you know, groups that you may be a part of. So, um, yeah, I'm not sure if there's a formal mechanism, but I would like to hear from community members at any time if I could. I would love to hear what people's concerns are. Thank you.
Thanks, Cara. Andrew?
Thanks. I've been involved in marketing communications and other types of, of, you know, as I've run for school committee is that Facebook's conduit of information, people have reached out to me through that, asked me questions, set up other, I'm gonna go off, there we go. Set up emails and phone calls with me. I think that there is a need to develop a communications system that allows us to be able to use potentially social media, potentially other means to be able to create a conduit for people in the community to reach out directly. But I think it's also incumbent upon those of us who may be members of these community groups to have open sessions, to be able to have, if not office hours, but have a way for people to know they can get in touch with you here. Creating some kind of formal process is important. Utilizing the tools people already have and the patterns they already know is important. Facebook has been very helpful. A lot of communication in the community goes out through that. I know Tessa hours every day answering emails and questions on Facebook. I think that it's a great way for us to be able to communicate. But I think there could be other technology mechanisms, other ways of being able to leave voicemails, other ways of being able to reach out to the community and ways those of us who may be in positions of representation to create community forums where they can be heard and and listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Danny?
I think this is a lesson probably we should learn from what happened last, yeah, this last year about the mascot, yeah, colonial mascot. Had that discussion, had as a public, really appealing being connected before the committee, school committee had a meeting to make a decision to vote. I think there will be less dispute and division in the community. It is very important for us to, as school committee, to open a forum, to, to have, yeah, to have a social room, so also to have a forum that open twenty five, twenty four hours, twenty, ten, twenty four hours, seven days for community members, families, and students to leave message, to leave opinions there. And this is doable. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Benjamin?
So one of the wonderful things about Massachusetts state law is that the school committee, which is a representation of the community, meets publicly bi-weekly every two weeks. And there is a public comment period most of the time during those meetings. If there's an issue that comes up in particular, a citizen, and I've done it in the past, you can go before the school committee during the public comment period and express your concern to all members of the school committee. Outside of that, there is opportunity to reach out to individual members of the school committee because they are your representation on that board. So if I'm elected, I will certainly be open to folks reaching out to me directly, whether it's via Facebook, as Andrew said, or through other online electronic means, via email or just picking up the phone and calling. To me, having that access to an elected official is so important. And I would never, ever in a million years put up a roadblock for folks to not be able to gain access to to me as a person. That's why we're running for school committee, all four of us, is because we want to represent you, members of our community on that board.
Thanks, Benjamin. Next question. We all want our kids to have an excellent education. Here in Acton, our academic opportunities are strong. One area that Acton schools have room for growth in, especially at the high school level, is school life balance. Our children's social and emotional well-being is at least as important as their grades. How would you assess the real experience of the students in the era? And how would you address this issue? We'll start with Andrew.
This is a great issue, and I think it's important to look at school life balance as we try to figure out what school life balance is going to be going into this new world we're in. While we're hopefully going to all be vaccinated by the time the school year starts coming up, there is still a threat to the everyone you know in your family due to COVID. That means we're going to have a different framework for the way that we go back to school. And it also allows us to look differently at how school and our work is going to shift with many companies embracing the idea of remote work. And to have some method of hybrid in the future, even if it's just on snow days. Is there a way that we can look at what's going on inside of our schools to come up with a better way of being able to manage their lives? I think there is. Part of it needs to come from research and understanding what worked last year, what worked this year, and what the kids would like to see happen over the course of the next year. Where are the pains? And then look at where we could find other opportunities to be able to take the stuff that didn't work and fix it, either with new technology, new scheduling, or reprioritization. With so many kids going off, going to high school specifically to find a way to get into a great college, it's important as well to understand what the colleges are going to actually start looking for and how they're going to change what their needs are based on what the kids need. Yeah, then the final piece about this is that work has shifted over the course of the last 15 years. Very, very straight to more or collaborative environments. And I think that pushing our kids into a more collaborative environment as high schoolers, as junior high kids, will allow them to be more successful when they get out of school, whether they want to go towards college, towards trade, towards entrepreneurialism, whatever they want to deal with. So I think it's very important to look at where they are now, where they could be, and how we can help them.
Thanks, Andrew. Danny?
This is a very important question. And, yeah, especially for, yeah, I I realized it how important it is. Yeah, when I met a kid who dropped out from a high school and he's a, yeah, he's a, when I, when I asked him why he dropped out, he said, there's no organic communication and well-meaning, no, no organic communication at school. And sitting at school for for six hours, yeah, in a tightly structured sector, that structured, I would say, structured curriculum is very boring and painful. What he wanted, yeah, I think he was appealing for a balanced school life, school time with academic learning and communication and meaningful socializing and communication and the relationship building in that, in that society, in, in, in school community. I would advocate, yes, school to high school and junior high, to pay attention to students' needs, to have what he said, this kid said, organic communication. And they can bring, they can, they can have some more free time to, I'd say, talk about issues or discuss, this, no, have discussion about, let's say, math problems, okay, no, their academic learning. And they can even bring, yeah, have free talk time with us, with us, with us, school teachers, educators.
Thanks, Danny. Benjamin?
So one of the ways that I would gauge and assess how our students are doing in terms of school life balance is reaching out to our educators. Our educators are literally on the ground, day in and day out, working with our kids, working with the students within the district and really trying to help them along in terms of achieving the goals that we set, we as a community set forward for our kids. And one of the concerns I have is that we're not bringing enough of our educators' feedback into this feedback loop. And we're leaving them out of the decision-making process when it comes to our kids. As you know, Acton is a very high stressful environment, especially for the high school kids. I've heard stories through the grapevine where kids are trying to deal and cope with the stresses of not only performing for their teachers, but performing for their peers and trying to get into, you know, higher academia. And we need really to be able to put the brakes on some of that stress that's out there in the community because we've seen suicides in our schools. We have seen kids just, you know, go off the rails because too much is being expected of them. And I think by bringing in those educators' experience, knowledge base, and observation of our kids along with our children's responses, then and only then can we really look at how we can address school life balances. Because before the pandemic, it was, it's a pressure cooker there, and I've heard it numerous times. And I have concerns, especially for kids like my own son, who are sensitive, good-hearted kids. And I am concerned for the future, for his future and his peers' future as we try to ramp up to get caught up to where we once were.
Thanks, Benjamin. Cara?
Thank you. Um, in this question, the premise of your question says that the social and emotional aspect of a children, of a child's experience is at least as important as academic performance. That's the premise of your question. And and that is, I mean, that should go without saying, but does that go without saying? The children feel such pressure to achieve. I don't think that the children understand that we do value their emotional and social experience and that it is at least as important to us as their academic performance. So Danny's son was asking for, you know, Danny's son was telling Danny what his needs are. He was telling you quite plainly. And Benjamin mentioned the educators, that they should be involved and that they should be expressing their opinions because they are on the front lines and they are having the student contact. But to me, most important is the students, the, the, the people we're getting who are, you know, they're our, they're our most important constituents, right? That's what we're doing all of this for. So let's hear what their opinions are. Let's understand what they think about school life balance. Let's hear from them, especially the high school students who take this very seriously. And they understand what is at stake. So Danny's son was telling us what he needs. And I think that we need to listen to him and we need to listen to educators. And we also need to understand the premise of this question, which is that the social and emotional aspect of a child's life is as important as the academic performance. Thank you.
Thanks, Cara. I don't see anyone raising hands, so I'm just gonna go through two additional questions. How would you grade? How would you grade the district's current plan for a full return to in-person learning? We'll start with Danny.
As far as I know, school has an optional, yeah, has, has, yeah, gave, gave parents option, gave students option. You either go back to in-person for in-person study or remain remote at home. So I, I think it's time to go back. And we have already missed a year, yes, starting from last March till this, yeah, this May. It has been a year missed, lost, the in-person learning. And there are many benefits, yeah, many, yeah, stimulus, stimulus in present study, yeah, have, which cannot be replaced by virtual study. And, yeah, it is, it is very, yeah, considerate to give parents and the students who don't feel safe, who don't, who don't feel ready to go back and give them the option to remain remote study in the rest of the year.
Thanks, Danny. Benjamin?
So I have concerns about returning, especially by April 5th. I feel that the district is doing the best that they can in terms of trying to juggle what the expectations are of parents of the state and of of the educators. But I'd like to shift the the question more towards how would I grade the state's push to get students back into classes? I would grade Governor Baker along with his administration, giving them an F because they are not doing their due diligence in terms of ensuring that both educators and students are fully safe to being back in class. I see some of the guidance being given at the statewide level, which conflicts with what the CDC is giving in terms of guidance. I've talked to also with colleagues of mine who are physicians at the Brigham and Women's Hospital. And they've also shared concerns in terms of whether or not it's a good idea to put kids three feet versus six feet indoors, especially with ventilation issues across the state. So while I feel that our district has done the best that they can under the circumstances that they're facing, I feel that the Commonwealth and in particular the governor and his appointed officials have done a horrible job in terms of addressing safety concerns of both educators and parents.
Thanks, Benjamin. Cara?
Shirley, please repeat the question.
How would you grade the district's current plan for a full return to person learning?
I'm not going to grade something that I haven't had a part in creating. Because if I've created it, fine, I will give myself a grade and I will expect other people to give me a grade. However, this has been an issue, this has been unprecedented, which my kids tell me, never use that word. However, this has been an issue, this has been unprecedented, which my kids tell me never use that word. However, this COVID-19 has really been something that we have never experienced before and we didn't know what to do going into it. And educators in our district. Have gone above and beyond. I am so impressed with their dedication and their, their skill and what, what they've been able to achieve. That I would not criticize them for anything that they've done. I really believe that the, the educators and the administration have all had the best interests of the children in mind. And so to balance the, um, those interests, to, to look at what these educators, the teachers in our schools have already done. And the dedication that they have exhibited. I, I, um, I'm not going to grade them. I'm just going to say that, that it's been outstanding and that. Everyone understands the need to get people back to school as quickly as possible. We need to get our educators vaccinated. We need to value our educators for what they have done. They have been amazing. And our children really have been very resilient and we need to respect them and laud them as well. And we need to do the best that we can for, for everyone and not, you know, grade them. That's not really my bailiwick here, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara. Andrew?
I think that it's incomplete right now. The system's, the district's putting together their plans. I know that with logistics of bringing kids into the school while still needing to maintain three feet of separation. Every day, everywhere, making transitions very difficult between classes and the junior high, making it very difficult inside the, uh, the. The idea of lunchtime, still maintaining a need for six feet apart. Facing the same direction so that you don't have the, the risk is very difficult to deal with. I think that the push to bring kids back has been, i- i- it's been managing against a per- a perceived mitigation of the risk. We've spent a lot of time over the last year managing the risk of COVID-19. And we've gotten to a point where there are enough people with vaccinations and enough people that have had it. And enough time has passed where people are getting tired of this. The virus isn't tired of us. Nobody under sixty-five is able to get it, the vaccine. Nobody under sixteen is able to get the vaccine, as vaccinations are opening for students and for teachers, thankfully. Uh, they should all be vaccinated before the kids come back. April 5th is a very early date for things. I, my family went remote this year. News who can. Seeing that over the course of the rest of this year and seeing how things play out. We cannot push too quickly and take our desire. For COVID to be gone over the reality of where things stand. Data's changing. I've seen all the presentations over the last couple of weeks. Uh, last week, rather, from the district about where things are. I think that, uh, the push from Desi to bring kids back to full is. A little too risky for my blood.
Thanks, Andrew. So our last question will take a live and, uh, end our session soon. Okay. Solo, you are unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Um, and I had written the, um, question in the chat as well, just in case the members want to look back on it. Um, but it's kind of a what have you done, um, in the past, specific actions to make sure. You are an effective member of the Acton Boxboro School Community? And then how would you describe an effective school board member?
Thanks, all of those questions. We'll start with Benjamin.
So in terms of what I have done in the past as a member of the AB School Committee, one of the very first things that I can recall when we moved here. Eleven years ago, and then after my son started school in kindergarten. Was, there was a question about the Jewish holidays and the potential of them being chopped from the calendar. Me being the big mouth that I am, I went before the school committee and argued to the point where. I was extremely concerned about the lack of inclusion at the time for the school committee. And got into a heated exchange with, um, members of the committee at the time because of. Concerns over inclusion within our community. Long story short, as you know, if you've seen the, uh, calendar. The Jewish holidays were, uh, remained within the calendar and continue to this day. I think that in terms of, uh, how would you describe an effective member of the, the board of, uh, the school committee? I think somebody who is an advocate, somebody who is willing to go to bat for you. Somebody who will make decisions, um, in the best interest of the community, which at the time may be perceived as. Maybe not the right decisions, but on, in the long haul, turn out to be the right decisions. I feel that you need an advocate on the school committee and somebody who will go up there and who will fight for you and for what you believe in. And therefore, that's why I feel that I would make an effective school board committee member, because I'm here on your behalf. I'm here to represent you on the Acton Boxboro School Committee. I appreciate your vote on the thirtieth. Thank you.
Thanks, Benjamin. Kara?
So the question, as I understand it, is that what have I done in the past to prepare myself for being an effective member of the school community? Of the school committee, the school community? In my mind, those things are intertwined. Um, well, you know, I have been actively involved, very involved in the schools since my children. Came, became members of the Acton Boxboro School Community. And when they became members of the school community, so did I. And I've always taken that very much to heart in every child and parent that I have ever met in this community. And it's been the learning experience of my life to have, you know, three children, to have a, a child in kindergarten. They come in, you know, all our children, they go in in kindergarten and as children and they come out as adults and in high school. And it's, you know, I really think that there's actually nothing quite like it in American society and it's been the education of my life. So what I have tried to do, that will make me an effective member of the school committee, is throw myself into it. And just say yes to everything, whether that is, um, acting as a person who, you know, helps do the fundraising for all the, um, events. That the, that the, um, grade schools have in order to raise money for the things that the, the enrichment programs that the children, that the parents want for their children. That is extra above and beyond, or to be a class parent and also to say yes. And, um, when a classroom didn't have a parent, to sometimes be a, uh, parent to, uh, pa- plant. Yeah, be a cl- parent in two different classrooms. You know, the reason I'm getting a little flustered in that is because I know these kids and I've known many of these kids. And I know the kids that have gotten into trouble and I know the kids that are no longer with us. And so that's been, excuse me. That is going to make me an effective member of the school committee, because I care about these kids and I know these kids. And I think that's what you need to do. You need to throw yourself into a community and you need to accept. And really enjoy and, um, listen to everybody around you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara. Andrew? Andrew, you are talking on mute.
Sorry. Thanks, Kara. I, I appreciate you doing that, Kara. I know it, it's heartfelt and I know it's very difficult. Thanks for this question in particular. I've been involved. I am on the student, uh, the school councils for both CT Douglas Elementary and RJ Gray. And that allows me an opportunity to be involved with the administration, with, with the teachers and in understanding how. These two schools are moving forward. So I, I know about the, the, the terrible planning that's going into bringing kids back. But I also know about the budgets and I know about some of the issues that they have and some of the planning they do for other academics that are happening inside the schools. I have been the parent who makes latkes for the kids at Hanukkah, read to the kindergarten classes. But I think it's more important to think about how I can bring my experience into the school district from the, the. Member of the school committee, looking closely at how the cultural changes outside our schools need to be addressed within our schools. Giving our kids the tools and knowledge to stand up to hate. We need to build a safe environment for learning, safe from infection, safe from hatred, safe from insecurities. Think we need to build and maintain a handle on how our budgets are spent so that we can be smart in our spending and to. Ensure that we focus our efforts in taking care of our school community. I think we need to expand how we communicate with our community, not just with families who are kids, have kids in school, but also all Acton Boxboro residents. I think a school committee member is a part of the community, but is a point of, of, of communication for the community. And I think that's, well, that's what will make, you know, a, a good member. Hopefully I'll be your member. May their words be with you, as I say.
Thanks, Andrew. Danny?
I believe that it takes a village to bring up a kid. And in the past years, and I think I've spent a lot of effort to learn. To, 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 to learn the, what a teaching, um, educator. Is like in the system and what do they see, how do, yeah. And what is dynamic between educator and students in our community? And I studied, yeah, I put myself back to school and I get my second degree. And I also, uh, explored homeschooling and joined this homeschool, I say, community. And us, yeah, and that, and I also participated in a four H club, club. And I go to four H club every meetings, conventions. Every year with my kids and with our club. And something very special I did is to, to, yeah, to, how to say, to. To, to see, to, to practice it, the philosophy of, it takes a village to bring up a kids. Uh, a kid, I formed a small-scale community with six. That does not include our own family, or, yeah, six families. And we, I, yeah, I made it raising happy youth. And we gather together, we, we gather kids together and parents together. And we, we, and so we celebrate our holidays together. And we also talk about school, not school, not school challenges together. And we try to, yeah, we try to deal with it, to form a relationship. And form, uh, I said, uh, a bonding with our kids and with seven families together. And we, um, we, we form a small community. It's an experiment I am doing. And I hope every family that in our, raising you happy youth together. That every, for every kids, all together we have, we have thirteen children. And all the students, um, in, in our small group, they were, they are all thirteen students. Well, learn from each other, grow up together and grow stronger. And I would say to, to achieve success in the end. And I would like to enlarge this experiment to a bigger society. That's why I am running for school committee this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Thanks, everyone for joining. Unfortunately, we cannot get to all the questions. Or if you want to be here all day, all night. So special thanks for our participants, our candidates. Um, everyone should go out to vote whoever you're, um, voting for. On the election day. Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate being here. I'm happy to stick around for any further questions. Uh, it's up to the moderators if they want to keep the Zoom open, so.
Yeah, sure. If anyone wants to continue some discussions, we'll keep it open for another fifty minutes.
It's really the candidates, right? Are you all? I want to be fair to everybody, so. We do have some really good questions we didn't get to, you know, so.
I have one more question.
One more. Shelly, you want to do one more?
Okay, sure.
Uh, next question. The school committee may be considering an MCAS waiver soon. What are your thoughts on standardized testing this year? Okay, let's start with Kara.
Um, well, I have a long, um, grappled with this idea of standardized testing. And actually, uh, when my, when my oldest son, who's a freshman at college, when he was in second grade. And my, um, my youngest was supposed to go into Blanchard. I thought that I really was against the standardized testing and so I took him. Um, and put him in a Montessori school, the Montessori school in Littleton for, for his second year of school. And then my, my middle child, Raynor, was in, um, kindergarten at the Montessori school. Uh, so I had spoken to a lot of teachers and I came to understand how much they taught to the test. And how much I thought that that was such a waste of time. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's kind of unbelievable to me that. They do spend, or it seemed to me in grade school, when the children are so full of life and so full of curiosity and so not, um. Adapted to standardized testing. I just thought, um, it was something that I would rather have them engaging in creative pursuits. So I, um, I have struggled with standardized testing. So I think that, um, it's really not a priority, basically. I mean, I understand it helps, um, in standard way move, um, the schools forward. But how much does it move the individual forward? And especially now in this time of COVID, we really need to examine how, um, relevant that is to getting the kids into standardized testing at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara. Andrew?
Standardized testing, I understand why the government wants to be able to do it. It's not to test the kids, it's to test the deficit of what learning happened over the course of the last year. However, the MCAS take a certain amount of time over the course of a year and we only have so much time left, especially with the push towards in-person. The MCAS, per Desi's requirements, will not allow kids to take them remotely. So that means every remote child has to find a way to go against the quarantine that they've had for the last year. And sit inside the schools to be proctored for an MCAS. There are no penalties for kids or for, for educational systems that are.
Looks like we lost.
No, I think allowing, uh, seniors to graduate without MCAS this year would be important. I think that allowing students to opt out of it would be important. Uh, but I also think that allowing students to be able to take it remotely would be important. But I think that it is pushing for government data rather than what's best for the kids.
Thanks, Andrew. Danny?
Standardized assessment is a mean of assessment. There's no perfect assessment. We should know that. And, uh. We need a way to measure our students' achievement, either their performance after a certain period of time of learning. But I, I know, yeah, I have no objection to waiving MCAS. But the question is, what is going to be a more effective measurement or assessment? What is an alternative? Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Benjamin?
So standardized testing has a place in time. But right now, this is neither the place nor time to be pushing for a return to the MCAS. Before the end of the school year, as Andrew, uh, indicated earlier. The standardized testing is a tool used to, to really grade how districts are doing based off of their students' performances. And I feel naturally that during the course of this past year, it's been a unique year to say, uh, at least. And therefore, I feel that a federal waiver, um, to waive the requirements of having. And therefore, I feel that a federal waiver, um, to waive the requirements of having MCAS this year is perfectly reasonable because number one, we do not want to put additional stresses on our students. Number two, we don't want to put additional stresses on our educators. And three, we don't want to put stresses on our remote learners who will have to come back into a proctored environment, as Andrew indicated earlier. And really, it's not worth the time and hassle. We can put off standardized testing for this year. We can allow our seniors to graduate because I can guarantee you, nobody's going to ask how well you did on the MCATs twenty years from now. It's immaterial. It's a means to test districts to ensure that they get their funding. Let's waive it for this year and then we can revisit it, uh, subsequent years moving forward.
Thanks, Benjamin. Is anyone interested in taking more questions? It's already getting pretty late. But the next question is from Shran, so maybe he has a little bit of priority. What, what limits the answers to like one minute? So I'm, I'm gonna ask it. AB is a very diverse community. While on the school committee, you are likely to be presented with recommendations from the community representative that may be con- contrary to your own personal views. How will you balance the input from the community against your own personal opinions and bias? Uh, we'll start with Andrew.
I love this question. I, I sent a message saying is, I think it's important in every aspect of our lives to understand our own biases. It's important for us to see how the biases that we grew up with, the biases that we have every day need to be set aside, need to be learned against. And when you're inside a position of, of responsibility for a community, to focus your bias for the community and not towards anything that you have in the background. I may like a particular cheese, but that doesn't mean that that particular cheese has to be served at every meal at the high school. I think it's important for us to be able to keep in mind that the role we have is to represent the community and our focus has to be on what's best for the community, not what's best for me or people I know or what I think, but really what I think is best for everyone overall. So that, that's where I sit on this. I think it's important to focus on reducing the biases, recognizing your own and working against them to focus on what's really best for the overall objective you're trying to accomplish.
Thanks, Andrew. Danny?
They, I had a conversation with my daughter, who is a math grade student, maybe in the car. And she brought, yeah, she brought up a question to me. She said, Mom, and, yeah, considering she is a teenager, she, she said, Mom, it's a very, yeah, it's a violence. It's, it's, it's a, yeah, it's really hard to gain a violence, uh, when you try to, yeah, when you, uh, when, when you have to a- adapt to the world, uh, of, adapt and integrate with, I would say, the situation, that the group you are in. And meanwhile, you must still be who you are. You don't have to lose your identity. I would say, yeah, it is hard. It is bound, it is balanced, it is dynamic, you're always polite. And, uh, I would not, yeah, if I, yeah, if, if I can serve for the public, I would never kind of, I, I would never lose the courage to choose to, to, to stand for what I want to stand for. And I would never forget, I am a Chinese, I am Asian. Meanwhile, I want to stand up for all. I want work for the best, for the whole community. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Benjamin?
So we all carry our own biases. We all carry our own preconceived notions of how we view others outside of our own individual bubble. It's our duty as potentially elected officials to set aside those biases, set aside those preconceived notions and represent the good of the community. What I may view in terms of my own, you know, pet project or can preconceived notion may not be applicable to the, the community at large. So it's my job as an appointed official or an elected official, as I said earlier, to set aside those preconceived notions, look at the facts on the table and deal fairly and equitably with any issue that comes before me. Whether it's, you know, at work or on the school committee or elsewhere, we need to set aside those preconceived notions in order to create a greater harmony within our community.
Thanks, Benjamin. Cara?
So this is what I think children are all about and this is what I think life is all about because children bring, you know, they challenge you, they bring these ideas to you, knowing who you are and knowing what your biases is, biases are, and they will challenge you and, and put you out there because they know you. But when you encounter strangers, the, the, the farther away from your own preconceived notions and opinions that stranger is, the more valuable what they have to say to you is not that what everybody has to say, um, isn't valuable, but often we live in an echo chamber where everyone agrees with us. However, when we find commonality with people who are expressing opinions that are very different than our own, the, the, um, the lesson there is to get granular about what those people are saying and, and what they mean, where they're coming from, what do they want to express to you? And so I think that this is what life is all about. Life is not about living in an echo chamber. Life is about learning about other people who think very differently than you do and that's very valuable.
Thanks, Cara. Thanks, everyone, for staying late and taking extra questions. Now we're gonna call it a day, finally. Good night, everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you. Really appreciate.
Thank you. Thanks, folks. Have a good night. Remember to vote.
Thank you.